Welcome to all the meeting reporters. Join me, please. I'm glad you're here.
Uh, could we do the roll call, please?
Mrs. Fryrick. Mr. Desai.
Here.
Mr. Polesnow.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Yeah.
Mr. Sanders. Mrs. Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Sears.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Tillman.
Here.
Eight members present. Thank you. A quick reminder to please silence your cellphone during our meeting. And this is the first opportunity for public comment. All comments and questions will be addressed to the president. Board and staff members will not normally respond to comments or questions during the meeting unless recognized by the president for this purpose. Comments will be limited at the discretion of the president to five minutes or less. Any comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We have action on the board minutes from our planning meeting on January ninth. Are there any comments, corrections, anything regarding those minutes? If not, then we can consider those approved as they were submitted. Mr. Sears, treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Schrader. I'll give you a little financial update with some of the figures that I find interesting, one of which is the interest income from general, other, and full flex investments. This December, we brought in about sixty-eight thousand versus fifty-eight thousand from the prior month. Just a little sidebar on what's happening with interest rates. There's something known as the Pennsylvania School District Liquid Asset Fund, and that is a place where schools are allowed to essentially invest money in a risk-free instrument. And those rates in December were as high as four point two-three percent versus one point three-eight last April. That's good news and bad news. It means we can make a little bit more interest, but it also is an indicator of what our future borrowing costs are going to look like, so keep that in mind. Last month, our general fund revenue was three point one million. General fund expenses were four point four, so expenses outran revenue a little bit, and that's essentially what I wanted to share with you relative to the numbers. We have a consent agenda. Would any board member like any of the items considered separately? Or are there any questions on any of the items? If not, the chair moves approval of the below-mentioned items.
Second.
And I assume we can do a roll call vote on that?
An agenda item. This will be considered a roll call vote unless I hear votes to the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, thank you. I'm not aware of any information that I need to share as board president, so we can move on to superintendent's report. Dr. Krauser.
Thank you, Madam President. The first item that I'd like to share this evening is the approval of the updated health and safety plan. The state does require a six-month annual review, six-month review of the health and safety plan. To date, there is the current processes and actions that are in place have been successful, so we have not yet changed, and there are no recommended changes to the existing health and safety plan.
Okay. So we need to, we need to have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the health and safety plan this evening? Again, it can be a consent. This will be considered a unanimous roll call vote unless I hear votes to the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes.
The second item that I have is the presentation of the proposed calendar. It's in a draft form for discussion this evening. I'm going to share, share that, have Dr. Lorfink begin that.
Okay, thank you. So we took the information from previous calendar committees, and really the feedback that we'd been given last year from different committees really felt still appropriate. We did not gather a whole large stakeholder group to review the calendar. However, looking at the calendar, you have a view in front of you that is a little different from views in the last couple of years. Took a look at some local calendars, some different, different school districts in the area to really look at some clean design calendars to get rid of some of the clutter and really get some of that extraneous information off of there. So it does look a little different than in the past. Calendar is very similar to the calendar this year as far as where the dates fall and where different breaks fall, taking into account different holidays, as well as professional development opportunities for our teachers, as well as the changes that were made in the York-Superman Educators Association negotiated agreement. Are there any questions? You'll also notice that there's a Spanish version, so you should have, you should have two papers. One is in Spanish. The best we could do, before it's published, we'll have somebody that speaks Spanish really good take a look at that and make sure that it really makes sense to a native speaker. We did feel since that's our largest second language spoken in the district, we wanted to have a Spanish-language version for our families.
So is there any feedback for the administration regarding this proposed calendar?
We're not looking for a vote this evening. We're looking for a vote in late February.
Right. I just wonder if we can offer any feedback or are there any concerns at our first, at our first view? Are we to understand that the association has had input or?
Yes, they have. The only thing that's probably going to change based on the association's input is if you look in January, on January twenty-sixth, one of the items that is in the new negotiated agreement is that the teachers would have an early dismissal within two weeks of the end of every marking period. We were originally looking at the January twenty-sixth day as a good day for that. However, in consultation with Mr. Evans earlier, it actually might be better if we move that to the twelfth, which would give them time to really do some work on their grades and things before the marking period ended and not after, which makes more sense. We had put it later in the month to avoid some choppiness in the weeks, so it wasn't a short week and a short week and a short week, so it could get into some continuity for the students, but for the teacher's sake, the twelfth is probably going to be a better day for that.
So I'm not hearing any deal-breakers sort of feedback for you, so we can just go forward with, I think, as, as we normally would, so.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Lorfink.
Thank you.
Next item that I have is taking a motion for the approval of overnight field trip requests. The first one's from the TSA, which is the Technology Student Association, the Model UN Trip, and the Family and Career Community Leaders of America Trip, that's the FCCLA Trip.
Is there a motion?
No.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions about these, what is that, three organizations then with overnight field trips? If not, then we need to vote on that, right?
Yes, please.
Unanimous roll call vote? This will be considered a unanimous roll call vote unless I hear votes to the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Schrader, I know that people from the technology group back here, do they have any words that you'd like to share with us maybe tonight about what's going on in this trip or something?
Uh, the trip that was submitted was the state conference, so students will be competing at the regional level in two weeks, and then students that qualify at the regionals will be going on to state in April. Last two weeks, we had twenty-four students, about twelve that qualified to go to nationals. We're hoping to have just as strong of a showing again.
Keep going.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's good information to know. Thank you, and hats off to those students and to their advisors on this. That's awesome to have, plan to take that many, so that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, and then the final item for me is the superintendent's report, which will include state of the district for our January update. So first, want to just again highlight the thanks to the board of directors. January is Board of Directors' Recognition Month, and as I shared last month, it's not a single-month celebration. We're recognizing the hard work, dedication, and commitment to the directors year-long. So we certainly appreciate some directors that had corresponding times, were able to get into some of the classrooms and be guest readers. I do have another stack of cards that I'll be sharing again this evening from some students, again expressing their admiration and thanks, so we continue to celebrate you this month and every month year-round because of your commitment, so thank you again. The next item on the list is the, is the monthly student enrollment report for your review. Kind of just going to go through each one of those. They are recognized in your handouts for this evening as we prepare to get into the last stage, which would be the upcoming events. As always, each month, we talk about the importance of being involved at a community level. We have some important events that are coming up, as you can see here, and then moving into February, you can see we have the musical, which is hard to believe that we're already talking about the February musical next month. Tremendous amount of work and effort being put into that, so we're looking forward to that happening. So I want to take a few moments here and just kind of walk through the state of the district report. My clicker seems to be a little delayed here, so we'll see. So I'm going to actually just have you push the button, seems to be a little delayed. So as always, each and every month, this slide is part of the presentation from me. It's important that we keep a focus on our vision and mission, that is our, our compass, it is the beacon and we, direction we move. It helps guide the decision-making at the organization, our planning, our budgeting, and all things built around the goals. And as a reminder, we're, we're keeping our focus on our four primary goals at the end of this conclusion comprehensive plan, and those four goals are guiding us into our next cycle of comprehensive planning. So when we really think of that vision, we think about it in three parts. The primary first part is ensuring that we're empowering and emboldening students to meet high standards. The second part is how we engage our community and focusing on the value of that student growth. And lastly, how do we do that to encourage our students to independently define and explore those pathways for their future? That's the opportunity for them to walk out the end of their careers, employed, enrolled, or enlisted, as they walk across the stage moving forward. So again, just in kind of a nutshell, we use that to guide our four goals, and we have a kind of a delay here in the slides. Again, those four goals, what you've seen as a part of those presentations in the past. All right, so I wanted to just kind of share a little bit about the data that was collected for the state of the district. A variety of committees, we were fortunate enough to be a part of the start of this school year. Not only did we have the comprehensive planning committee, but we had professional development steering committee, we've had special education steering committee, we had our gifted services, as well as some content-specific mathematics, our new science standards, all of which have helped provide feedback from the collective to help guide this data collection and moving forward. And of course, then we have some quantitative measures as well from our future ready index. I was, spent time throughout the fall engaging with each and every staff member through interviews and surveys, as well as our standard assessment data reports that are presented at academic standards and finance, academic standards and curriculum meetings, and our financial demographic reports. So that data collection helped lay a foundation as we move forward, kind of have a delay. There we go. So first, it kind of tackled some big-picture summaries of the data. You've been seeing it throughout the fall at our academic standards and curriculum meetings, but big takeaways are we continue to perform well, the reading, ELA, PSAs are doing very well, consistently outperforming those averages. Mathematics, we do see a decline as the students move through the system. However, we're seeing greater growth as they move through the system, so we'll continue to focus that and, and move through there. Science, we have rebounded since that time in 2021 where many people saw that post-pandemic decline. Keystone, again, eighty percent of our students are consistently performing above that proficiency level as one of those five pathways towards graduation. But most importantly, we use the in-time real assessments such as Acadia's, IXL, or CDT to guide that instruction and planning that we knew to, to hone our skills and provide those students what they need in real-time advancements. To address those current data collections, we have some actions and motions, as you've been shared with before. Dr. Furman's been leading the mathematics steering committee, as well as the science, environmental literacy, and sustainability, technology, and engineering standards, which are new. I think all of this has been cited for those to get underway, so those committees have been up and running and laying some foundations to the curriculum work. Our elementary multi-tiered system of supports, the MTSS model, again, that structured support is designed to allow the system, the school, to quickly identify students with needs and then provide an intervention in a, in a rapid fashion, so we can quickly assess the needs of students and intervene as quickly as possible to ensure that we're closing any of those gaps as they come in. We're continuing to show that growth in the development of our staff in the primary ranges with literacy and the science of reading. And then, of course, as always, that continued work to evaluate our maps, our curriculum maps. And lastly, we've done work to increase those social-emotional services to address the goal of the competencies. We've embedded curriculum materials both at the resource level for K to eight, increased needs with our social services, and certainly with the board's help, we've been able to, to bring another social worker to the board this evening. So very excited about the work of the current actions in motion. As always, we focus big picture. Our four goals at the district level are to engage students and the whole child development, so you can see a couple photos there of what are our driving needs and what brings us to work each and every day, and utilize those four goals. So I want to unpack those students a little bit more closely, and what does that look like? So here you see the current enrollments with our October one submissions dating back to 2011, all the way up to this year's October one enrollment. And from a first glance, when you look those ten, eleven years, you can see on average it's about three thousand students, but I want to unpack that a little bit more closely when we look at that. So the first six years of that, the enrollment averaged around twenty-nine, eighteen, but then when you move the most recent six years, you can see that the average enrollment is increasing. So I, I laid that as a precursor to really focus more recently on these past five years and what that increasing enrollment looks like as we investigate those children and those students and those young adults as they're coming into our system. So if we unpack just those more, most recent years, we've shared this image before, I have been able to collect the data for a twenty-two, twenty-three submission, and we've embraced this diversity, and it is a strength of ours, the diversity of our students and the competencies that they bring to our, to our system. It allows our staff to become more culturally competent as we engage with the diversity of our students. But you can see are growing, as Dr. Lorfink had shared, our, our largest growing population is the Hispanic population, and increasing in those last five years at a much greater rate. The next group, again, our English as a second language student, you know, well over twenty languages spoken within the district from K to twelve, and again, focusing on just these last few years, you can see that that population has been growing, and we're providing services and needs to those students as they move through our system. Special education, the state average is the blue line, our line is directly under that, and you can see over, again, the last five years, we're seeing increases at both the state level, but locally here as well, students that are coming to the district with needs and or, some of those students were able to address those needs internally in our system, and some of them are requiring outside placements to address the needs if, if we can accomplish them here locally inside the district. It's thinking. Economic disadvantaged students. I want to unpack this at a little, at a kind of greater depth. So if you look closely at the economic disadvantaged subgroup that's moved through the organization dating back to 2013 to today, that October two enrollment, you can see, again, focusing on that last five years or so, we can see an increase in that population. This is district-wide, so district-wide, we're just crossing that forty percent mark. Individual buildings are much higher than that. For example, Yorkshire Elementary exceeds that forty, forty percent mark. So I want to take a moment and, and unpack this at a little, a deeper level. So the way that the state provides funding support in their basic education formula is to use a variety of indicators, and the indicators are designed to help us assess the needs of the students. When we think about providing services for students and those needs, the greater the need, of course, the organization tends to need greater resources, which inevitably costs more, and it provides greater resources for professional development for the staff, resources within the organization, the sharing of resources. So those indicators at the state level are used to determine basic education funding formulas, which we'll get into in a moment, that certainly needs some work. But when we look at, at how the funding formula works locally, we'll take a look at the next slide, they use a, most recently, the, the 2020 census, which is the American Community Survey Act. So this is a five-year rolling average on household income, and this represents all the schools of York County. I did remove York City. York City is a single outlier in this conversation that, you know, I did not put into this group, but the remaining schools are York County-specific. And you can see in the five-year rolling average from the most recent survey sample from the American Community Survey that York Suburban is ranking in the bottom half of that five-year average household income. If we continue to unpack that even deeper, we'll move into the five-year poverty percent from that same survey. And York Suburban is the number-one school in this concentrated poverty level. So during the 2020 year, that poverty level of a family of four was just over twenty-five thousand dollars for a family of four. This graph represents families that are zero to ninety, ninety percent of that number, so that means they're substantially below the poverty line, which is showing that Suburban has, again, focusing on those last five years, an increased need in our poverty families. And again, resources and needs to address those families are very different than what would be used in the past. It's an opportunity for us, it's a great embrace of that diversity, but it brings a new challenge to how we face and address those services, and how we do that both from a professional standpoint, but also from a financial standpoint. The next poverty line, which is slightly above the poverty guidelines, is the one hundred, one hundred eighty-four percent poverty line. So these are individuals, families, again, that are slightly above that poverty line, and you can see that we're, again, in that top half and slightly under the, the leading groups, but these, again, are families that are just above that poverty line. So kind of going back and using that data to dive a little deeper, I went back and investigated the last six years of our percentages for that poverty increase, and you can see that that substantially below poverty line group for the five years, you can see that trend is upward in how those resources, you know, are being utilized here at the district. And again, same with that one hundred to one hundred eighty-four percent of, of the poverty line. So the focus there is to unpack that basic education funding formula where they use those indicators to determine the need of poverty within an area, and then how the schools are being supported by the state level. And as we know, the more needs students have, the more resources are required to help them become successful and help our organization become successful with those students. So kind of thinking now in a different lens, you know, there's a quote, I tend to be a quote guy. We're tackling problems very different than we did in the past. So I want to just kind of focus, this is a snapshot on December nineteenth of our building enrollments, and I want to focus on the high school. That, on December nineteenth, we had a enrollment at the high school, students in their seats, eight hundred and seventy students. Let's unpack that a little deeper. When we look at the students in that high school, the students that are highlighted in orange is an additional two hundred and thirty-two students that are in outside alternative pathways. So those students aren't counted in that eight hundred and seventy. These are students that are choosing a pathway outside of what the high school currently provides. We have everything from charter schools to cyber programs to York County School of Technology, that is the largest line you see there on that graph. We have special education students that are in outside placements. The dark black lines indicate students that are part of that eight seventy, but are also choosing an internal pathway that's slightly different than what we might say is the traditional high school experience. We have students that are in the York County School of Technology's Flex Program, where they're taking some academic programs here and flexing into that career and tech programs The first column represents seniors that are taking at least one college course. So they have access to college courses in the high school, and they're taking just one college class as a senior. Outstanding opportunities for our students inside that high school. And of course, the bottom line is those students that are engaging in internship and work experience inside the school. So they're spending some of their time out engaging in career pathways, and we have thirty students that are doing that. And that was a snapshot of the day. I know Dr. Ellis continues to get those numbers, and I could see Dr. Adams kind of motioning his head, we're seeing even higher number of spring enrollments into those courses. This is just that fall group. So it's great to see that we're providing those pathways. So, you know, the highest number that you see there is that York County School of Technology. So if we unpack that a little deeper, what you see is the process of our applications versus enrollments. Going back to 2018, 2019, the York County School of Technology is a comprehensive program, and in my opinion, it is the best in the state. What we offer to those students from a comprehensive lens is just second to none. But it is comprehensive. So they have limited seats, and districts share those limited seats. But what this graph is indicating, the 2022, 23 next year placements have yet to be determined. Those are the applications that are applying right now for next year's seats. You can see a growing demand of students that are eager to get involved in the career pathways at York County School of Technology. I think, again, having been in conversation with the York County School of Technology, there was a little bit of a COVID slop, slide there that happened, but we're now seeing that and an increased interest level at that. So it's an opportunity, it's an appropriate pathway, and certainly preparing students for a future of either enrollment into a post-secondary program or employability almost So using that data, then I kind of dove into the data, working with the high school administration, to where our students were choosing their pathways beyond that senior year. The 2022 graduating class isn't on there yet because we're still confirming some of that data. But as you can see, that the blue and the orange lines are starting to spread as they move across the system. And what that's representing is the bottom graph, the blue represents students that are choosing a four-year college pathway, the orange at the top are choosing pathways outside of that. So they're enrolling in technical programs, career opportunities, two-year systems, eighteen-month programs, but not a traditional four-year program. So the data is indicating that students are seeking greater opportunities to employment or career pathways that will get them to a college or secondary or post-secondary school at a different process. So what does that mean for us at Suburban and where we want to go? So kind of using all of that data, I want to just unpack a little bit about the challenges that we see before us to ensure that we're an effective organization and accomplishing the great tasks that we have before us in public education. The first is expanding student and community needs. That's both a challenge and an opportunity. The diversity that we see from our student needs and the requirements necessary to help them be successful is going to present both financial challenges for the organization and staffing and professional development challenges. Increasing enrollments. We do know that there are properties being developed in Suburban. The old Memorial Hospital has been approved and will turn into a facility that's going to house upwards of eighty-six units for students and families to move in the district. And there are proposed opportunities at Regent's Glen, which will offer up to one-hundred-and-fifteen more units. So we will see increasing enrollments, and we'll see property development throughout our footprint, which, again, great opportunities, great experiences. I want everyone to come to York Suburban. But in the same breath, we've got to figure out how we're going to address that, both financially as well as professionally, because we do have the greatest opportunities for them here at Suburban. Staffing, availability and demands. Staffing availability is a challenge that we see in education, I think, for the first time ever. The number of, Dr. Fuller out of Penn State released a recent study, the number of certificate employees, meaning teachers that are graduating with a certificate, was surpassed by emergency certified teachers for the first time ever. So we put more teachers with an emergency certification than we did with teachers graduating from college with a teacher certificate. And we're seeing those numbers change. So the availability of staff and the competition associated with that staff is becoming more and more of a challenge. I tell teachers in this group that they are superheroes. The work that's required as a teacher or a staff member in a school system is that of great demands. We are accomplishing many needs, and we're accomplishing many tasks. Teaching is a complex profession, and those demands put strains on teachers, on employees, building employees, you know, support staff, everyone. So we want to make sure that's something we're addressing. Student and staff safety is always a priority. How do we always reflect on what's working well? And how do we continue to refine our system to ensure that our students have access to the needs that they have and do that in a safe and efficient manner? Access to resources. With growing needs, we need to have access to those resources, and how do we do that? That that student gets that exact access to the resource at the exact moment in their educational journey to ensure that they have equity and they can ensure that they have the opportunities presented to them at the right moment in their educational journey. Customer priorities and relevance. You know, I think we've seen a change in education over the last five years where different customers require different needs from an organization and from a public school. We are a public school system, it's our responsibility to provide every single child within our district boundaries the greatest opportunity to be successful beyond our graduating stage. And how do we make sure we do that that's relevant to the needs of the community and relevant to the needs of the future? It's competitive for both families and employees. I talked a moment about employees a minute or two ago, but the world is changing and opportunities are greater. But families are also seeing competitive opportunities when it comes to public education. What do they want for their family? What are their needs? How do we accomplish that here within the school district? And how do we also provide opportunities for them to have the right choice and help guide them in that choicing? And lastly, and probably the most important, all the great things that we do with an organization requires us to have the right amount of money to do it. The state funding formula is flawed. We've said it here before in this room, we've advocated before, but it needs help. And you can see that with the data being presented, with our increasing poverty rates, that we're going to require more from the state to meet those needs. And with that comes the needs and growth of students. We have aging facilities that require greater attention and greater detail, and of course, we know that there are increasing rates and inflation. Great challenges, but with great challenges come great opportunities, right? So there's always that positive look that we have to address that. So recommendations that I have moving forward for an effective program and an effective school district as a whole, as always, we maintain a clear and shared focus on the vision and mission. The vision and mission of the organization is collectively developed. It represents the community at large, the teachers and the students, and that is our beacon, that is our compass, that is the direction we move towards. All of that's done when our instructional system is clearly aligned, coherent, and accessible. So we maintain high standards and high expectations. As I shared with the examples from the high school, just one snapshot, we have to have opportunities for students to get through our system without running into a roadblock where they can't meet what they need to be successful and springboard them into the pathway that's going to define their future. That challenge is real, that challenge is great, but it's also exciting because it's a new opportunity to provide students with new experiences and provide them what they need at that moment. And I said it again, that career and technical education program is essential. The technical skills necessary in the state of Pennsylvania have growing needs. We've seen that from the state level. You know, Governor Wolf has been asking for more focused attention to what we need from our skilled employee and unskilled workforce. How do we keep that middle, employable, Commonwealth citizen in Pennsylvania and working in Pennsylvania? A challenge that we must embrace and a challenge that's real. Safe and supportive, as we talked about it, we want to make sure that we're having more resources for more at-risk students. Students with greater risks cost greater dollars and need more. We need to make sure we're providing more to those students so they can meet with success. That's done through collaboration and communication. The greatest thing about York Suburban is we have a committed and dedicated staff who want to work together and want to solve these problems. It was a theme that came out in the interviews that despite the challenges of public education, the individuals that I met with were all motivated to want to do more to help. How do we do that, that we're not just working harder, but we're working smarter, we're more efficient, and we're better supportive to help them accomplish those tasks? As always, the community is a big part of what makes a school successful, and we have to keep the community engaged and a part of the decisions that we use moving forward. That's done through partnerships, we continue to enhance those partnerships. And, you know, when we look to the future, how are our facilities more dynamic? How are they? And I kind of use this example of like an accordion. How can we condense and expand when needed and when necessary to make sure that we're addressing those needs? Continuing on that is an advocacy level. As I shared before, the funding formula is failed, it's broken, it needs fixed. How do we do that at a state level and at a community level to make sure that the people that are, have an opportunity to make the changes and continue to afford York Suburban with the resources that we need to be successful are advocating for us to help us accomplish these tasks? We need to prioritize and consolidate resources. When you have a greater need that's spread out across a greater footprint, the challenges become more authentic and more problematic. We need to look at how we can consolidate those, use our focused attention, and use the power of our collaboration and the staff that we have to prioritize those programs. As always, we keep a focus on an individual student at an individual student level to what they need to be successful. So with that, kind of moving into the spring, I'm going to be making some recommendations from a staffing perspective where we're going to really prioritize programs. What are things that we need to keep? What are things that we need to cut? And what are things that we need to create? Looking for a recommendation on a school resource officer? This serves multiple purposes. The school resource officer is not just a school and safety security officer, it is a mentor, it is a career pathway, it is a relationship. It are all the things that help make those relationships between our community and our school a positive and more engaging experience. And it also provides a layer of safety and security, which is essential in the school system. And lastly, it's the personnel to meet those student needs. With increasing needs and increasing enrollments, we need to make sure that we have the right professionals that are highly trained and highly experienced to meet the needs of those students inside those classrooms. So always coming back to that vision and mission, that's our primary focus, it's our goals, it's the excitement of where we're headed. Great challenges lay before us, but with that, as I say, great opportunities are presented. So we're excited as we move into the spring and we begin to prepare that budget. I know Mrs. Chichuli and her team have been working diligently to assess all of these components as we start to have that budget really tell the story that we hope to share before the board in the coming months, to look about the next stages of the game. Difficult conversations, difficult decisions, but all for the right reasons because it's built on our opportunity to inspire a bold future in each and every one of those graduates. I think that's my last slide. So with that, I'll open it up for questions or reflections, maybe just that.
Anything for Dr. Crowzer regarding his report, state of the district? Thank you for that. I think that's great information that all of us need to be cognizant of, and the public. Will there be a link online for the public to view this?
Absolutely, Madam President. We'll have the link to the presentation as well as the link to the video review. And as always, I appreciate that. That does conclude my report, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Business office, Mrs. Chichuli.
Thank you, Madam President. Under the business office report is item A, a consent agenda. You have before you the business office report, would any board member like any of these items considered separately? Or are there any questions of any of these items? If not, I would ask a motion be made to approve the below mentioned items.
Any discussion on any of those items? Just for the public's information, these items are, have been before the board and previous discussion has taken place. I think that's important to point out, if somebody's just viewing this, you know, it could be perceived that, wow, they sure moved through spending a lot of money quickly. And just for the public's awareness, we have seen these before and have had pretty extensive discussion over them, but certainly if there's further discussion, now's the time. If not, then, Mrs. Chichuli, you can do the unanimous roll call vote, please.
This will be considered a unanimous roll call vote unless I hear votes to the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes. And item B is the dining report from Whittsons for your review. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Long, Kylie, thank you for being here. What's going on with the students?
So the new marking period started recently, which has been going well so far. Minithon just had their Battle of the District Dodgeball Tournament on Saturday at Central High School and raised almost three hundred dollars. The main event for that will be April fourteenth and fifteenth. Science National Honor Society is hosting Science Night for the elementary schools tomorrow. TSA has their regionals coming up on February fourth, and they have a chance of getting into the states. Girls' basketball is currently eleven and four with two away games this week, Wednesday at West Perry and Friday at Northeastern. Boys' basketball is seven and eleven, and their next game is this Friday. Wrestling and swimming are also having great seasons, and spring sports are gearing up for their season with meetings for those who are interested.
Thank you. Anything for Kylie? Science night, I think that might be a new one for me. With the elementaries. That's awesome. That's great. Thank you. Anything for Kylie? Okay, committee reports, Mr. Robinson, Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. You have before you, excuse me, I'm overcome with emotion. You have before you the personnel report. Would any board member like any of these items considered separately? Or are there any questions on any of these items? If not, the chair moves approval of the below mentioned items.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any questions, comments, anything on the personnel report for Mr. Robinson? If not? Oh, sure.
Can I just, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Under substitute, where are they going to be?
There is one substitute, Kayla, who is substituting for a sabbatical at the high
Good information. Anything else?
Well, before I conclude my report, Madam President, if I am not mistaken, Brianna Dur is in the audience. It gives me great pleasure to be the first to welcome you formally to the district and to give you the opportunity to say a few words if you would so desire.
My name is Brianna Dur. I am an LCSW, licensed clinical social worker, as well as a registered police officer. So I have a lot of background in mental health, working with ages three to twenty-five, really, so a lot of experience with the different populations. Yeah, I plan to kind of do whatever we need to do, you know, to break down some of the barriers, run some groups, maybe if that's helpful. And it sounds like I'll be in the middle school.
Welcome.
Thank you.
It's really great to have you with us, and I think it speaks volumes about the vision that Dr. Crowzer has shared with us tonight, and you are an integral part of that vision. We thank heaven for small mercies that you're with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there no other questions? That concludes my report.
Mrs. Chichuli, could we do a unanimous roll call vote on the personnel report then?
Yes, ma'am. This will be considered a unanimous roll call vote unless I hear votes to the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you. You're still on, Mr. Robinson, legislative report?
I am on, only if Mrs. Fryrick would like me to have the floor. If not, I shall proceed. Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Fryrick. The legislative update that you've all been waiting for with breathless anticipation. As many of you know, Dr. Khalid Mooman was named Secretary of Education. As you also may know, the House of Representatives lost no time in dispelling the notion that they could solve problems creatively after the election of Speaker Rossi. At a special session, they accomplished nothing. I think there were no surprises there. There will be three special elections on February seventh and change the structure of the House, so I'm sure we'll see more exciting developments after those elections. In other news, SB eighty-four, protecting the First Amendment right to freedom of religious expression, passed the Senate. This bill was sponsored by York's own Senator Phillips Hill and Senator Schwank. SB one-one-four passed the Senate as a pilot program to provide firefighting training for interested high school students. This is a creative response to the precipitous drop in the number of volunteer firefighters in our state, which at one point was over three hundred thousand, and is today is slightly north of thirty thousand. So I think we can all agree that there is a need to address this problem. And in closing, Advocacy Day is scheduled for April eighteenth, in person and virtually. To my esteemed colleagues interested in attending, let me recommend joining Miranda Jenkins for the Let's Talk presentation on February fifteenth, which will give us more background information on the mental health needs of our district. Now, as you may remember, last year, the YF- Now, as you may remember, last year, the YS delegation attended Advocacy Day, and thereafter, there was record funding recorded in the state legislature. Who can predict what the YS delegation will achieve this year? One can only wonder. If there are no other questions, that concludes my report.
Anything for Mr. Robinson? Okay, Mrs. Fryrick? Okay, now it's my turn, hey?
That's your turn.
Okay. Under the Lincoln Intermediate Unit, the only thing I report is that I understand that we share a representative with Dallas Town to the LIU, and I believe that's going to remain so in the coming year, if I'm correct. Thank you very much on that. As far as the Joint Operating Authority, I have nothing to report. We are working on our budget for next year, and we're also having a survey done at the York Learning Center to see what kinds of, what the condition of the building is now. This has not been done since Central sold the building to the LIU a number of years ago. I want to say when they built the new high school, but Central's not a new high school, I guess, still, no more. Okay, so we have that. But we are working on that budget. And then York Adams Academy, I'm pleased to report that we are working on our budget for next year, and it appears that there will be no increase. Write that down, Mrs. Chichuli. No increase in the per-seat tuition for the coming year, and Suburban will continue to maintain their 15 seats, which I'm very pleased to see. So that concludes my report. Thank you. Mrs. Chichuli, Tax Bureau.
I have no report.
Thank you. And I have no report this evening for the School of Technology. We have a meeting later this week, so I'll have information next time. As always, we'd like to thank those of you who joined us. Always good to have people sitting in the audience, as well as those who may be watching the streaming and the recorded meetings. You have on your agendas, board members, the list of upcoming events, as well as future board meetings and committee meetings. I will point out that there are two committee meetings scheduled in February, Property Finance on the 20th of February, and Academic Standards on the 27th of February. I believe those are the meetings coming up in February. And this brings us to the last opportunity for public comment. Any comments from the public? Hearing none, unless there's something else for the good of the order. Looking around the table here, we can stand adjourned.
We'll scan these in and just send them to everybody. Basically, all the kids just roll them out to everybody.
Oh, that's good. That's good. Thank you.
... and it was cool and much, much more than it was then.
So I know it doesn't make math math sense, but you said you have math opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.